Right?
The culvert, you never cleaned any of it up behind it going up the hill? There's a pot of sand. Okay, well, I've never put in a culvert that didn't put in a public ditch line behind it and stone it. Well, it took two or three weeks to fill in. Well, because this came up, I just figured that I wasn't gonna worry about it. We didn't have one before and the water wouldn't run over it, just like we used to do. And it does. There is a lot of water, but I'm gonna put myself on the spot and say at least 70% of it, maybe more, comes down on my foot. Wait, for that to happen. From the top of the hill. Yes, when we grade the roads. We always put it that way. And yes, there's, I mean, I can't, there's little posts. So yes, it runs out down to the end there. If you watch that, you can see the water. And when we grade it, there's even small water bays because they, this, you know, you watch it, we push most of the water. This side of the, the other side of the road. Well, it wasn't away. I mean, the first rain had turned the mud and I went down a track and dug that all up with some gravel on top of it because they were sinking right in, eight, 10 inches deep, but.
Well, it's up to the association of gathering. They're supposed to maintain it, right?
Yes.
And obviously that it's filled and overfilled doesn't sound like it's been touched in a long time. Somebody's not maintaining it as it's supposed. Do you agree to that?
We haven't touched it, no.
Well, maybe the sand has to be cleaned out.
Every two or three rains it'll go back in the way it is.
But it's up to the association to maintain it. That's what I'm gathering here. It wasn't put in improperly. I'm guessing it's the right size. And
So
it has to be maintained by the association.
Well, the only way that I can see it Well, the only way that I can see it to work is to call it out, put a gravel swale back in, where it was for the last, well, since the seventies when the road was put.
Did that work?
Yes, it worked.
It worked.
It worked. It was only like the hundred year rains, we had that trouble, everybody had trouble.
Yeah.
A couple of times. We had some real big downpours and had to get, fix the swale, get some gravel in it.
Yeah.
But.
Does that affect, George, I don't know if you heard that, what he's talking about doing? Does that affect anything of ours or is he free to do that?
I said, the only way that I can see them make this work, so we're going to have to clean it out every two weeks, is to take the culvert out and put a gravel swale like it's been since the seventies. Well, it didn't all back then. We put a proper swale in.
And it's not just taking out the road, it's taking out the driveway of the guy that lives down the road off our road. Yes. Yeah, it took the dri, that fell right into that driveway. That's correct.
So is there a solution? Is there something you see they need to do or we need to do?
Well, we only had trouble, I've been there since 84, we only had trouble. Maybe four times. Really? Who called you guys to go up and work? I, I don't remember. I don't remember you guys coming up there more than once. I went, and I went down to the town and that's when we were having some crazy, crazy rain. And somebody on the lower followed me up with a bucket of gravel and fixed it that one time. Other than that, we've always fixed that. And it's been that way, which is like I said, three or four times. Now, I, I agreed to maintain it, but we can't be down there every two weeks cleaning it out.
But that's part of maintaining. If it's every two weeks, it's every two weeks.
Then, then, the culvert's not the situation, the culvert's not the answer for it, it becomes that, that much of a problem.
Your other solution, I mean, you're more than willing to try that, but gotta make sure it doesn't do anything to our road also. Have any adverse effect to that. If it doesn't, then everybody's happy, but. I don't know if that'll work or not. Sounds like that's your option.
Okay. Can you and I get together sometime and go over it again? It's gonna be hard for me because I've, I've been in the hospital. Two months this year. Boston and back here, and every three days I have to go walk. If I can, if I can catch you when I'm, like, today good enough to walk. I can go down there with you. Okay, can I get a number for you? All right.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
And once George is all set, we'll discuss the paving bids. All right, George, you're back up from the hot seat.
Busy guy tonight. You okay?
Microphone.
You okay, Gary? I know it's your birthday and all, but.
Oh, it's your birthday?
Oh, did I let you catch up?
Happy birthday, Gary. Happy birthday. Do you want us to sing?
You really don't want to.
Trust me, you don't. How old are you?
She paid me well.
Okay, do you want to finish what you were saying before we get to the paving bids? Will we? That's because he's thinking about your birthday and it was Ed's birthday last week. Can't forget that.
Um, no, I think we're all set with the other, you know, as far as what we were talking about was.
Okay. All right, so moving on to the paving bids. Karen, did you have an update in regards to that?
Yes, I reached out to R and D and just asked if they could give me an updated AC price and what that increase was. They were, they were very generous in meeting my demands. I didn't get, reach out to them till like two o'clock, so. They felt that the increase would be with the new AC price about an additional $15,167. Now, again. Depending on when the work is able to be done, we'll probably see another increase for July as well, but we don't know what those prices will be yet, so.
Okay, and now were you able to reach out to them in regards to the questions that we had at the last meeting?
Actually, before I could reach out to R and D.
They, they called me that next day.
The road agent came in and had informed me that they had reached out to him. And said that it, they, the flagger and.
It was all included in the bid. They didn't put it.
You have paperwork that says that?
I emailed R and D and just asked them if, you know, if anyone had reached out and they said that they had and that it was all included. So it is in an email that, so their price is what is on your spreadsheet.
So we don't actually have it in the contract?
They didn't send a new contract? No.
It would be typical to send one.
The figures that you have are accurate. Of course, you'd add another $18,000 to it with the new price, but it would be $18,000 across the board, so the figures are what they are.
Yeah, AC, is that June?
That is June, yes.
I guess what my question is, I mean, I know we discussed at the meeting, our last meeting, that any questions like that was supposed to be going through Karen?
Yeah, he called me the next day.
But how would he have known that we had questions about the flaggers?
I asked him about it because he called the next day to see if we made a decision. So I had told him to have his office get ahold of Karen, which Karen had already. You know, was reaching out to him anyway. At that point, you were.
Later, right, after I spoke with you later that afternoon. I reached out just to confirm that they had, George and, and R and D had spoken. And she confirmed that they had and that the bid they gave included.
And I did tell them it has to go through the town administrator, not just me. So.
Okay, so they stated then that it included the flaggers, the drive aprons and the, I'm not gonna say the hand method, but it included the drive aprons.
Right.
My concern again is that it's only in an email that it's not part of the contract or the paperwork that they sent and submitted on their quote.
Right, right. They didn't send a new contract.
A quote.
Or a new quote.
Right. Does anyone have any questions in regards, or is there any other information?
George, do you anticipate any issues working with any of these vendors?
The only one I have a problem with would be Busby because they don't own, they don't do paving. Who knows who they're gonna hire?
But there would be, if, if they sub it out, they're responsible, correct? I mean, I, Karen, is that correct? If they sub out the paving, they're still responsible as the contractor.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So if there's an issue, then under the contract, they're liable for that. But you, you, I'm not sure, have you worked with Busby before in any other capacity?
They did reclaiming for us two years ago.
Did you have any problems with that?
Not with the reclaiming, no.
Rick, did you have any questions?
He fell asleep. No, we, we received a notice that we're having problems with video and audio. Are we?
Yeah, I am here.
Oh, okay.
I am here, but the, the.
Oh, I can barely hear him.
The live stream is really, really bad tonight.
It's coming, it sounds like it's bad.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the problem is. No, I don't really have any questions. I would, I would definitely like to ask. George, who he wants to use.
Right.
And why?
I understand that. I mean, we all know what fuel prices are and it's unfortunate, you know. I mean, I don't have a problem. With any one of these bidders. Except, you know, I just wanna know who's gonna do our pay. That's all I really wanna know. Well, the price of asphalt now.
No, we don't know what we're gonna be able to afford, but it's reasonable to think that however much one vendor goes up, the other's gonna be pretty similar. Right?
The AC prices are gonna change constantly.
Right, yeah.
Monthly, they're changing.
Right, so you may end up having to remove a project.
Right.
That's probably pretty much a given.
We're anticipating on doing that.
Right, but everything else is the same across the board. If you remove a project for one, you're gonna remove it for all four, so the prices are gonna remain as you see on the bids.
The bid's the bid.
Right.
Were we able to get Rick?
Yes.
It seems like it is. Is the Zoom going through just that speaker?
I don't know, I got mine cranked all the way up.
I feel like I'm listening to Charlie Brown and it's the teacher, it's like.
Yeah, me too, except I get it two minutes later.
Can you? Can you type in the chat?
Yeah.
Rick, can you type it in and Mary Jane can let us know what you're trying to say because we can't hear you.
Yeah, that might not be a bad idea, Karen. Tell him to call Karen's phone and we can put it on speaker. He definitely needs to be able to comment and vote on this.
Yeah, her phone's in the other room. Can you hear me now?
Hang on, Rick, Karen's getting her phone for you to call. I can hear him saying, "Is he there?"
I'm used to talking to myself.
Rick, we can hear Rick really well.
Good.
I think we all need these microphones.
Hello? Okay, I can hear you guys pretty good. I just.
Yeah, we can kind of hear you a little bit.
There's just a delay, you know, and.
We can't hear you at all, so now, hopefully.
Okay, Rick, go.
He wants to know who George wants to use.
And well. Honestly, I would rather stick with R and D after seeing what kind of work they did last year and. You know, I mean, they checked in, all went along. did last year and, you know, I mean, they checked in all went along to see if the roads were holding up, which meant an awful lot. If they didn't come down, they would call, you know, but they were here at least once or twice, three times during the winter, and riding the roads and checking them to see if there was any crack. I have, yep, and there is no cracking. The only cracking there was, was on one of the original roads and that was very minute because they topped it. Yeah, I mean, we may not be able to top some of the roads that we wanted to top, or maybe not even be able to do the shim overlay, but I would like to base Province Road and get it done. Well, the top coats right now would be more important. I mean, the shim overlay is just gonna be a shim overlay. But if we can't, you know, if we can't get one road done or whatever on top coat, I mean, we can do it next year. They're, they're holding up well. But my biggest concern right now is, you know, getting Province Road based.
We are the fiduciary officers of this town, so we make the decision on and make a motion to spend the money.
And I'd just like to say, I appreciate your, George, you are the road agent and I appreciate your, your opinion and respect your opinion. And R and D did do a good job, I totally agree with that, but I don't, I don't see, or I haven't been given a reason why any one of these others wouldn't, that we know that they would not do a good job. And, and where you say it's not much difference, $10,000 is gonna be a lot of money in this, in this highway budget, given the way everything's going. And if these people, any one of these people are under contract, I think we need to be on top of it, that if things aren't going the right way, if you see things aren't going the right way, then we need to be on top of it and make sure that, that they correct what they're supposed to do.
The only thing I will state a concern of mine, more contractually, okay, because if we reduce where we're gonna be paving, because R and D has not provided a quote that clearly states that the flaggers is covered, and we're talking that's a minimum $13,000 difference, that 10,000 could essentially turn into 23,000, that will be in the hole. And the fact that they did not come forth and send a new estimate stating, other than an email, that didn't come from one of the owners, I presume it came from one of the clerical staff, correct? So that's not even an owner that has confirmed it, this is clerical that is stating it, and she has no authority whatsoever to make that statement. That is my concern, because contractually, we are looking at flaggers, I'm gonna do the base price 13,000, but we also have the drive aprons, which was another between 3 and 8,000 dollars that they didn't even put in in the first place. And why didn't they put in it in the first place? Why would it take a conversation with you to say, "Oh, yes, it is covered," when their estimate clearly states flaggers are not covered in this contract, that that is responsibility of the town? That was very clear in their estimate. So that's my concern. I don't, I don't, I wouldn't be doing my responsibility to this town if I voted for something where everybody else put that information in place and we're giving the benefit to another of the vendors that others perhaps weren't given.
Karen, but did you tell us last week that, I know Jason helped with this, which we were very grateful for, did he not indicate to you that if the bidding didn't come in properly, that when he does it on the state level, they don't even consider it, if not all the information is in the bid?
Until it's in writing, you can't even count on that. It has to be in writing, it has to be signed by an officer of the company. And the concern is, should these numbers shift because we are reducing costs? We don't know if something could be, I'm not saying that they would, but it's very easy to slide that information in there.
And as far as basing, if I had to give up a base road, I would probably do Holmes Road because Holmes Road's a short section and there is no sign of cracking on that road. And there's actually no sign of cracking on North Bostrom. So, I mean, they were based with a full two and a half inch. Well, we should bait, you know, top them. I mean, they should be topped, that's your wear base. So as far as pushing a road off, yeah, I'd push Walker Road off. It's not gonna get any worse than it already is, if I have to go up there and do a greater shim over the rough spots, so be it. But I would push that one back.
Previous to last year, a lot of money. If we get back to the situation where we've got all types of cracking again, the job isn't done correctly, we're gonna be spending a lot of money again, whether this is 10,000 or 7,000 or whatever the difference is, we're gonna be paying it again. Job came out well, you worked with us, complied with everything we asked, as far as I know, they had, I'd be the first one to say we've gotta make a change. What we did in the past, they did a good job and they were more than willing to work with us.
But what makes you, why do you say, Gary, that what makes you think that GMI or Advance or Busby could not provide us the same service?
I didn't say they couldn't.
Oh, that's why I'm asking.
Somebody that I thought did a great job, they were easy to work with, I think, the road agent liked some.
But they didn't comply with our requirements for the specs. And that's clearly notated by Jason, who did the work in the spreadsheet. And that has to be taken into consideration. Because we were very clear last year that we wanted to make sure that the specs were done correctly and everybody had to follow the same thing due to the issue with the depth or of the inches of the asphalt. So we were very clear when we sent it out with the specs that everybody would have the same exact thing and.
There's a reason.
and why don't the rest of us know that?
I don't know.
Well, then.
I'd like to know. Because I don't like to second person. Yes, there's a contract, but if they get into, will you, if they have a battle over the contract, then it comes back to us that we're gonna get the issue back at us. There's a reason they don't pay, there's a reason, why didn't this other company put their own bid in? I don't have an answer, but there must be a reason.
Bottom line, Rick, I know you mentioned the contract, we have nothing that states they're covering it, nothing. And we're talking about a potential 23, $28,000 difference. I, I think we would be fiscally irresponsible if we took the motion to take on a contract like that, that's not, it isn't follow through. You know, we just, we don't have anything in writing from an officer of the company, irregardless of it, that it's verbal, something like this has to be in writing. So on that note, I will take a motion. Whoever wants to make a motion? Do we have a second? R and D?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so two to three motion fails, I'll take a motion for paper.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Busby Paving for 606-947-65.
Is there any discussion?
Excuse me, I made the motion to accept the contract from Busby. That's who we got the contract from, correct, Karen?
Any further discussion?
And for the record, I have no idea who they will hire to do the paving.
Okay, any further discussion, comments? I mean, and we do keep in mind have the Economic Uncertainty Fund as well, so it's a cushion, but. So going back to the motion, the motion is Busby for 606-947-65. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Busby? Thank you for your input. Do we have a non-public now? All right, so there is no public input, so I will take a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Any discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you.